All right, I apologize, everybody. We're trying to figure out some technical difficulties here. So and we had to walk through the building before we got here. So I apologize for being late. Right, special, I'd like to call a special meeting the Georgetown Central School District Board of Education via Zoom order. Stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one. Please be aware the meeting is being recorded. Is that still on? Okay. I need motion to amend the agenda to include personnel action item three B and seat on 10 action item five A. Hey, discussion? All favor? Opposed? Abstained? So carried? Sounds like it's gone. Echoes gone. All right, capital projects. Non-action item question, answer with project manager and architect review. I'm supposed to be did.
Yes.
As we walked through the building. Okay. So let's move on to financial action items approved revised budget calendar. I need a motion. Any discussion? All favor? Opposed? Abstained? So carried? All right, it does follow resolution be resolved at the Board of Education. To leave the fund balance as is. To cover the anticipated budget needs for the 2021, 2022. I don't know who that baby is, but. Oh goodness gracious. Did we have a motion, Linda? Is that good? Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? All right, non-action items, presentation of the 2021, 22 operational and general support budget. All right.
All right, everybody can see that? All right. So first off, a revised budget calendar. And I first, I want to introduce to you Steve Gola. Steve has been working with me. Steve's experienced person with budget as a business administrator for multiple school districts, been through, worked with state a lot, and also has been with Questar as a retiree. He's been a blessing in disguise to help me get through this process the last week and a half. And I do appreciate and a lot of this, he's going to help me go through. But I just wanted to go through this and let him, you know, make sure that he was part of this. So our agenda today, we're going to look at the revised budget calendar, which we just approved. Final tax levy and enacted state budget revenue. So that was the calendar now, I'm going to turn it over. And let Mr. Gola talk about the levies.
Yes, and the tax levy, I think you're all aware that, you know, everybody is subject to a tax cap. And what I did is I, you had been presented with the tax cap calculations and the draft tax levy for the upcoming school year 2122. I went through and recast it. I noticed that we had another, we typically have another capital expense that becomes an exclusion from whether it's the cap and it allows you then to increase your tax levy. Besides having debt service, we also put in that the district does a $100,000 what they call capital outlay exception project and do it in one year, get aided on it and next that becomes an exclusion. So when it's cycled through the calculations, which I will not go into because you're totally mind numbing. The bottom line is it allowed us to increase the tax levy more to up by 1.67%. So it gets a bit more revenue, which is certainly something that is not a bad thing. And I think we're obviously very, very happy about that. So we've got something covering part of it. Just want to say. So what you can see is the the tax levy was a bit lower. So now it's 1,9813,000. So I think we can go forward with that. So it helps the budget a bit. And next page of that, that really is just the the capital tax levy, what that is, it's showing the things that you get as in, you know, basically as an exclusion and it gets added back into what you can tax. And what I had changed where you see up above, it shows debt service 954,000. They previously that was 854, I added the $100,000 annual capital project that becomes an exclusion. So you can tax for it. And what that does is it cycles through and you get to the bottom line, it makes it 502,000, you know, we have an as an exclusion that we can tax additional for. It was 402,000 before. So that's where 100,000 shows in. Okay. Okay. Next one is just a, the adjustments on, on the aid. What we're looking at right now, you see that the aid numbers are what you say are the aid numbers, state aid for 2122 estimate, it'd be in the yellow 5 million, 183,000 dollars. That probably will change. That was the executive budget recommendation. We had been hearing in the one house budgets from both the state senate and the state assembly. They are getting additional federal stimulus money that I think came from the legislation that was passed, you know, in December. You know, prior to the new president taking office, that was a thing they did at the 11th hour to try to get people unemployment. But there will be the state getting money and the understanding is money from that the state has will be used by the legislature to actually give us an increase in foundation aid. That's the basic operating aid for the school district. And there in the executive budget, there was no increase for it. So we probably should be seeing in the final version of the budget, some additional state aid. We'll have to wait and see how much, but there should be a bit of some help there. Also, we'll get some, you know, revised calculations on the aid in total. So and one of the other things probably also worth mentioning is we are going for the current year, what, what I'm showing here, the all the state aid that we should generally get back what was taken away from the district, the governor had recommended because of the state's fiscal situation, most of the aids, especially foundation and some others, they were going to withhold 20%. And because of that 20% is why you reduce the budget and you cut 800,000 plus last year and, you know, positions weren't refilled and there were layoffs, et cetera, people re-targeted, downgraded to teacher aids, whatever. So the bottom line on that, we should be getting made whole by that. Everybody, the state has indicated. I guess the situation well enough, they ultimately, as part of the payments for the current school year, will eventually get the money back. I don't know when it could be, some of it could be as late as a final cleanup payment of aid in September, but it would be for this current school year. But the cash will come at some point. Yeah, there were, that was held back in 2122, I mean, 2021. And I think lately, some of the payments haven't been reduced. So whatever they took earlier, you know, we'll get ultimately get that back at some point. So state aid will be made whole, which will.
Would that money go back to this year's budget?
Well, what it'll do is well, what it is, we'll have to sort it out. And when the year finally ends and you look at all the revenues that came in, probably it would, you know, since the budget was reduced, I'm presuming probably not much of that would get used, probably most of it, I think would roll to fund balance. Because if you cut the budget, you are expecting the aid. Now you get the aid back. It should help increase the fund balance for the district.
Any other questions?
Just because we have that hundred allocated for that. So in other words, it's not like we have to have actually spent 100,000 exactly on a capital project. But we have it in a fund for that, we can exclude.
Well, what it is, we can exclude it now in estimate, I think you have to go back later and look at the and I think, what did you actually spend it? You know, and like you look at the next years and adjust that capital number and it all goes into the tax cap calculation later, but my presumption is probably we'll put it in now if the district will spend it. Next year.
Now, you know, it's, I think people forget that when you are on Zoom and your camera is on and you make noise, it does pop you up to the center tile and we can see what's going on. So everybody at home, just so you are aware of that. That's, that's okay. It wasn't a big deal. It was just comical. You know? Those who aren't aware of what Zoom does. So no more questions on that part of the budget? Let's move on to the presentation of the 2021, 22 debt service, employee benefits, instructional, special education budget.
All right. All right. So again, this is basically the calendar stuff that we already discussed and we'll move fast on that one, but we're going to get to the basically how we developed this and what we did, we begin with a three-year actual spending. The revenue state aid numbers that we just discussed and make any adjustments. We calculated the tax levy like we just discussed in previous. Adjust the budget model. Insurance. Medicare, et cetera. We review the implications of the previous year's budgets. We talked to other departments, we talked buildings and grounds, the cafeteria department, teachers, aides assistants, et cetera. And then we, meanwhile, we designed a program that's based on student needs first. And we're looking at student needs for next year as a priority. As we've been saying from the beginning is that our getting people back was a priority for the board and for the administration. So leadership team has been meeting with me quite often, looking at IEPs of students, needs of individual students. Moving on, this is the breakdown of the budget from 2017 to the proposed budget for 2021, 22. The Board of Education, which that is your basic budget, went from $4,146 in 2017, 2018. Last year's budget was 9,500. Central administration went from 237,000 to drop right down to 204,000. The operation of the plant. The new facility, you saw that we have about 14,000 square feet new. So with that comes costs, including personnel to keep it clean and also heating, cooling, electricity. So your cost of an operation of the plant is going to rise with that. And the cost of oil keeps going up. So we have to predict what it's going to cost. And the maintenance of the plant is also increased as well because of those things. Including in those things, and I gave you a printout of the thing, items that we're looking at. Security is your SRD. That's only increase of $800. That's the security that we have in our building. Central data processing is down 3,000 from the pre, the current year. Special items, this is a bunch of things that come into this code. It's down by about $20,000 from the current school year. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Supervision, regular school. This is 2020 account. And if Steve, you want to jump in anytime, you're more than welcome to. 3499 from 2000 to 2001, we're only looking at about, you know, less than two, or just about $2,000 increase for the supervision, regular school. Research, planning and evaluation. We also combine in-service training into this code for the purposes of budgeting. And as you can see, it's a lot less than it's been in the past, based on what we've been able to recover. Teaching, regular school, including summer programs, we put in summer programs back in there because of what's going on. Right now, we definitely need to have a summer program back. And then we're also looking at other implementations of AIS programs to really support our kids. You can see that that is 3.8 million compared to 3.7 million. So it went up about $100,000, but this is a necessity that we feel is important. Programs for students with disabilities, this is your, your outsourced programs. Students that go to Questar programs or they have to be specific to a different area, we have kids go Kingston programs, et cetera. Including in that also is the staff, the outsourcing of like OTPT, et cetera, et cetera. It went from 2 million to 2.4 million. $500. When we look at school library, auto visio, visio, we're going to not include in. That we have, but we're looking at decreasing that budget by about $1,000. Instructional technology, we're decreasing by, you know, $11,000 approximately. The guidance in regular school, we're decreasing from 142, 500 to 127, 100. Health services, we decreased about $3,000 from this year. Social work, regular school, we increased because of goes with their, you know, their step and experience. Co-curricular activities, we increased that. What we did is we just re-implemented all the programs for clubs, drama, et cetera, because again, this is child-based. And we're focusing on them first. And also for A2855, which is in the school athletics. We'll have full implementation, coaches, et cetera, back in place.
But a decrease.
But it's a decrease.
Why is that? I'm curious, with the guidance as well, I'm curious as to why they've just decreased as much as they have.
Yeah, I was gonna have the guidance too.
See, the guidance, it does take all of, I did the salaries in there, you know, as per contract. And then did, and I think there may have been excess in there before. Like, so what I tried to do, I kind of almost looked at this somewhat zero-based. Cause I went through and I said, you know, I don't know anything about the district. And so I literally took the payroll, I took the roster and I bumped up everybody's adjustment for step. And what they would be paying next year, did it by person by person to make sure we had accurate salary numbers. And so like, you'll see some variations in them because I basically put those actuals I came up with in all the codes. And I went where they showed in the accounting system. So there's, there's going to be some variation.
To be, be honest with you, you know, this is probably going to be the best number-based budget you're going to see because it went from base zero. Which is, there's no, you know, real fluff in here. We, we know what we have to do to get it done. And I do appreciate Steve doing that.
And, you know, I think probably part of the reason special that is up because that's, you know, the salaries, if they were being paid out of the A2250 codes, that's where I, you know, put the money. And the other thing is I also did look very careful at things and not knowing the district, maybe we won't have to spend all of this. Hopefully we, I sure hope we don't because it wouldn't be sustainable. But there were some things I looked and I'd look at the years and you'd say, okay, well, obviously 1920 is a lost year. I mean, 2021 is a lost year. It's weird, school is closed. Probably, you know, kids weren't getting services, like say special ads are not doing all the outside contracts they would for, you know, related services for kids, they're stuck at home. So I went back a year and everywhere I back, well, oh wow, Yvonne, she spent like $200,000 on outside contractual services. It was reduced in 2021. I restored it. So if you go back to a regular year and put like 10,000, she's probably going to spend it. Those are the kinds of things I looked at, looked at electricity. It was $139,000 in 1920. Well, it was reduced in 2021. I put that back. Jim is saying he thinks he's going to need, he was going to need 50% more for oil. I said, well, that's so much money. Well, again, 25% because of new space. I did those kinds of things, you know, so that's why, you know, it just, you know, why you see, you see all these variations. Look at what we'd spent in the past, what was a more reasonable year and try to make sure. And you know, if there's something, if there was something odd about what happened in the past year, well, that'll hopefully we won't spend that much. So it's good. But the thing is, if you don't have a budget that takes, allows you to spend up to that level, you can't just add it. Yeah. So that's kind of the why of all of that.
Moving forward. District transportation is an increase, that's an increase every year. So, you know, this is all transportation that we're, we're dealing with here. And the state retirement, obviously that's an increase now. Where to go from, what was the increase again?
Yeah, we've got some increases. What it was, it was like, let's see, it's like, oh. But anyway, what it came up is teachers retirement, that went up like, you know, 9.2% to 9.8% of payroll. State retired, state employees retirement went up, went up 2%. And what, and again, what I did, when I rolled through and did all of those salaries, plus any of the things we added back, then I applied the new rates to those. So that's, you know, why you see what we see here. Did the same thing for social security. And then, you know.
So adding back the full-time teachers and.
Yes, and that's adding everybody back that we added back, you know, superintendent gave you the list, it accounts for all of those people. And the thing is, I probably said, like, if there's anything in new positions, not a lot. Like I said, the only thing we added was to give Jim a, you got rid of the part-time custodian, gave him a full-time one on the contract. And I think the only thing we added was the need there anticipating more kindergarten enrollment than they would have thought. So a teacher assistant in kindergarten. But they're really, and then the only other thing, not a new position, but in special ed, needed more contractual, they said they needed more speech services through, you know, congressional through Bozey's.
And that was a cut from last year.
So it's bringing, so not a lot of brand new stuff because there's just no way this is up so high anyway, but not, you really can't do it easily. In the, okay, in the hospital, medical and dental, what I did there is took what we have is the bill, the bills and the guidance we've gotten probably around a 3% increase and inflated it. And I will tell you, there is some extras, that's why I buried some contingency here. You know, to have some extra money buried into the budget, which maybe you don't ever spend, but put that in primarily in the hospital, medical and dental insurance. Debt service is just a number that's supposed to go from having bands bond the anticipation notes for the capital project to go to actual, you know, serial bond financing. That's the number that came from the fiscal advisors and marketing is the estimated debt service, it'll change some. The transfer to other funds is what you've always had in the budget. It's basically $10,000 to the school food service if they need it to support their expenses. It's 20,000 to the special aid fund where essentially you take care of things like you know, summer special education where you get 80% of the cost back, but you have to pay 20 from just 20% from district funds, covers those sorts of things. And the other piece is $100,000 at annual capital project that we do. And you get aided the next year, that they call a capital outlet exception project in terms of state language. So so that is that. So that's really what it comes to. And it is a huge increase. I mean, it's, the budget is up by a lot.
If we look at the foundations and all the revenue that we have, total revenue, we're looking at 15,224,677. And that's including the local revenue, the state aid and other revenue that we have. So that's, that's where the revenue now, if you look at the pandemic adjustment, that is separate from the amount of money from last year that was held from us. So what they do is they put it in and then they put it towards something else that's going to come out of that state aid. So that's why you get subtracted out and added back in, it kind of zeros itself out. So basically, this is what we're looking at with 1.67% tax, tax cap. Recommended expenses is 16.720, $906 with the restoration, without the restoration with the revenues, again, was 15,224,677. The approach, we're, we're proposing to appropriate retirement reserves and all that. See, talk a little bit about that, about 165,000 appropriated, fund balanced fund to cover anticipated federal, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. Of 596,101 foundation aid restored from the state government, this is the 20% that they held, which is 735,128. And then what this is considered the Biden's Care Act that's coming through, we're anticipating 497,000 dollars from the federal government, which we're putting aside and what we, what our proposal is to use the fund balance to cover that money because we don't know exactly what that money's going to be able to use for. And the stipulations are going to hold against us. So we just don't want to be able, we want to be able to have the flexibility to get the people back and move our programs forward with knowing that money's coming. And then when that money comes, we can figure out how to move the money back and forth.
Right. So. Not knowing any of the restrictions are going to place on it, where you're going to have to account for what fund and what purposes it can be used for. My understanding has been, I would think we probably have some flexibility because talking about making local governments whole, so you don't have major layoffs and things like that, which should mean some flexibility, but we don't know. So we're hoping, depending on how long we get to keep that or how long we can string it out to use it. It would reduce how much fund bail gets pulled in and used to support the budget. You know, so, but, but at least we're looking at that. We know it's a revenue that's coming that can be used and perhaps even I thought about it because federal government usually allows money to be alive, at least for two federal fiscal years. So maybe that could be spread over a couple of years. We'll have to find out, you know, how quick they want it spent or when you have to liquidate it. So it'll determine later how exactly we make all of this work. And I think this is doable for now. And it's a big increase, the $900,000 increase in the budget, but I think the reason this had to happen, I look back and the 2021 budget, even before he did the cuts, had a very small increase in it. I was wondering, that budget looked like it was extremely tight to me. And would have been very tight. And if it had been a normal year, and where would it end, you know, where exactly it would have ended up. But I kind of looked at this more zero, you know, based look at things. And the 900,000 is because of basically when I, things like the health, the ER, S, TRS, social security and salaries, that in itself, I came up, that was almost $337,000 in this. And that's big. And that's big. Um, then it was special ed, other than the salaries. Uh, looking at those numbers that look like it could be high is two hundred eighty two thousand. We put in fifteen thousand negotiations next year for legal costs with all the bargaining units. Um, there's about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, superintendent mentioned all the equipment, sixty thousand in new equipment. So that's a one timer. That'll be only. Unless you need some more and all those utility adjustments based on that, I thought that twenty twenty one budget was sixty thousand. When I come up with that, that's about seven fifty four. So the difference between that and nine thousand is that kind of contingency. Hopefully you don't have to spend all of this, but I think what's going to have to happen for the future. Um, the district is, has a lot of people who are senior and they're very, very high on the pay scale. Uh, the thing that would give us relief is if we get retirements. And hopefully, um, the state is talking about retirement incentives and I did notice that. In their one house budget, Senate and Assembly, they each put in, they would approve what legislation. For a one time, give a window and allow people to retire with no penalty or loss of their retirement. As long as they have twenty five years of service and they're fifty five years old. Normally, if you retire before age sixty two without thirty years of service, you get major penalties and loss of your retirement. So what this would do encourage people who are more senior, if you've been around twenty or at least fifty five, you have been around twenty five years. No penalties, goodbye, you can see it. So maybe some teachers will take that. If they do any other kind of retirement incentive, a more special one that, you know, the district would have to pay for. Over time, it probably would be worth it because we could hire people that's so much less in many key teaching positions. I think the key to the future to make all of this sustainable is going to be needing to get the senior people to, uh. You know, to, uh, that they retire. A lot of, a lot of how, you know, very well paid people on the state, so. So that's kind, that's kind of where we are. So, you know, I certainly would hope we, you know, you wouldn't ever have to spend up to this amount in total. But from my looking at it as a person who has been, had nothing about, um. Um, Germantown about eight days ago, this is what I would do for now. I would do this budget. You know, we watch it very, you watch it very tightly. We hope you don't ever have to spend up to this, as you want to use as little amount of fund balance as possible. But I wouldn't want to take it down a lot more just to. You know, deal with all the, you know, deal with all of this. And it was kind of what I suspected. I said, a small district, you just go and start putting small percentage increases on things. This is going to be accurate. I think that look at the entire payroll and basically taking the time to move everybody forward with the contract. And see if everybody who is here today, if they're here next year and we do those changes, here's what they're going to cost. So. Hopefully it won't be that, but. That's kind of like the scenario of people know when they retires or leaves, that's what it costs.
We've had two letters of intent, but nothing, nothing official.
Uh, well, we did get, uh, yes, we, well, we did get something. There was a bulletin put out and then I think it came out of Senator Schumer's office. And they gave allocations by school district. We pulled that four ninety seven off of an allocation list. So we didn't like say, oh, you know. On an official piece of paper.
As long as Biden passes through the money to the states, the states pretty much said, yeah, you're guaranteed you're going to get.
Right, that's what.
Have no choice, I think. And so that was the question asked them on. Basically is, hey, how, how we guaranteed this money? And he's, he, some basic provision is the state doesn't have. Necessarily the choice to say, you're not going to get it, but they are.
Cause what the state has often done, what they like to do is they'll take money and they'll say, oh, we have this federal money. Well, here's what you're getting in the school aid for, and good, we'll reduce the state's general fund uh support for a school aid.
Yeah.
And we'll fill it, it will backfill it. Essentially rather than be additional, we'll, you know.
But what I saw today, the, from the budget, from the state, it looks pretty promising. They, they, they think that there are going to be no debt after this, um, the federal gave them some money. Uh, I think they're actually, what I read today, they might be five billion higher than they thought. So. It, it is pretty promising for the budget.
So really thing, and the other thing I think we'll, we'll, we'll know as the weeks go by, they pass the budget for April first. We'll know, we'll, we'll see adjusted aid numbers, you know, we're getting foundation aid that of course would reduce that fund balance amount, whatever we get, you know, in foundation. So hopefully that's, you know, that's something saying, it's here's that the legislature. Um, both houses are very, very anxious to put in foundation aid for school districts because. This is all star, last year there was zero and then the twenty percent cut. Uh, no foundation aid increases your basic operating, only that all the state really increases all the expense based stuff. You know, transportation, library materials, so. Both these, et cetera, so.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head. So the twenty percent that's coming back, is that the four ninety seven or the four ninety seven, what makes it?
Four ninety seven is going to be the federal new stimulus money out of the bill that Biden would sign. Uh, the seven, approximately seven hundred coming back. That is what the, you know, well, what we thought we were not getting.
Yeah.
In state aid because of a twenty percent cut, but will be paid to the district ultimately, we'll get it. Because basically now they're not, they're not implementing their, they're not implementing the twenty percent cut. We'll get it, we'll get it back in, in, you know, in general aid payments.
And did everybody see the, my mom that found that, cause he sent all the presentations? And he had gave a list of.
Yeah, I broke it down. Okay, so things that we're looking at as part of this budget and when we said priority is people, right? That's what we've been saying since I've been here. Um, we mentioned briefly positions for a reading statement. A point five custodian to a one point O. A point six music that was cut last year back to a one point O. A point six art position that was cut last year back to a one point O. Um, the P E teacher position reinstated to a one point O. The Spanish teacher reinstated to a one point O. At point eight speech, make that a one point O again. Um, a one point O science teacher that was cut last year. The speech improvement reinstated that was cut last year and the sixth prep for electives that was cut last year. Um, that gives more options for our kids to get uh more classes and electives under their belts. In addition, the programs, uh, the extracurricular clubs and drama reinstated fully, athletics fully reinstated. Um, I did put here Tech Valley as part of it as well for two students. Subfinder reinstated, Naviance for our students in our guidance reinstated. Uh, summer school Clipper Academy reinstated. Uh, for equipment and for reinstatement or new would be. Buildings and ground equipment would be a pickup truck because we need one, one's nineteen ninety five and it's about ready to die. A new mower, uh, some new misting units for, um, making sure that we're clean. And sanitized and two new floor machines because ours are dying. In addition, textbooks back and furniture back that we need to replace. Um, additional positions needed. We're looking at the teacher assistant for incoming kindergarten sized as, as large. Items not allocated, um, that is for the reading statement of this proposed budget. Is the library media specialist, as I mentioned, ESOL, because we don't have a high demand at this point. And the Bardi College at this point. Those are the only things that did not make it back. So if, if you really look at the numbers and you put it all together, we're getting ninety nine percent of the things back that had to be cut. And in addition of a TA and a full time custodian.
And the two Tech Valley, were they two for this next year or one for last year and another new one for this year? Or how are the, how are the two allocated?
The, the two will be allocated as the one that's already there and one addition. For right now, and that's all I could afford at this point. One's a senior though, I believe. Right? No? Okay, I mean, again, we, we might have some play there. I just.
Cause every year we instate one. We plowed one student to Tech Valley, age freshman year.
Yeah.
So if we could put two in. Um, as the sophomore class who does not have anybody, I would recommend that we, if, if they can go, I would assume that they can. That we write, we bring a sophomore and a freshman if we're going to do it. That's my personal opinion. Um, and again, that's a board decision overall. Uh, the other thing, uh, heavy equipment.
Yeah, that was my next question.
Because heavy equipment, we cut from our budget last year and it was transportation. We allowed the student to finish, but no new student could go. So that's another thing to look at with. So these are. You know, and, and. Just from somebody who's in a school district all the time, bringing uh kids back full time. There's some mental health issues that, and social issues that we're going to have to deal with as well. Um, so I really, my personal, we need to spend the money here in this district. We need to bring these teachers back. We need to bring the aides back. We need to get the people in the building. Um, and you know, some of the positions that we're looking at bringing back are fantastic for our social and emotional needs for our students. So I think that that is. Priority number one. Before we look at the stuff that's going on outside of this building. So. Which some of these guys coming back to can, might be able to provide some of that.
Right, and that, that's, when we talk about physical and emotional um situations. Um, another thing that I've been playing with is we do have. A person that just resigned as a teacher assistant that I would love to bring in as a health slash phys ed teacher. Because we need some help that is needed in their fifth and sixth grade to help them go through this mental transition and physical transition. Because they've been home and it's, and, but I didn't put it in the budget because it was so, we, we were getting to the point where I just couldn't do it. Um, but these are things that we can have discussions and, and we can cut and move, you know, pay, take Peter to pay Paul. I mean, that's, that's what we're here to do. Um, and I, I hear you. Um, I definitely agree with you. We got to focus on our kids in this building.
Cause that's the majority, the majority of our population is in this building every day. So. And we need them back.
Ben, I, I haven't asked this, but with the students that have come back. Have the teachers noticed a difference in where they were last year versus where they are now? Like, has there been any backwardness going or has the learning continued?
I, I think it's, it's individualized by individual students and their situations at home. Um, I think that some students are striving on, on the internet and doing things online, especially your higher level kids. Your lower, you know, your elementary kids, they need that socialization piece and I think there is a big difference. Right now, we're at eighty six percent, I believe, from grades K through nine. And we are, the, the, the first off, the teachers are ecstatic because the kids are back. Um, but we're seeing such positiveness in our, in our building with the kids being here. Uh, it's totally different atmosphere.
But have they noticed any difficulty in, in?
Of, of trying to reach them.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's definitely going to, there is definitely gaps. Absolutely, there's gaps. Not just social, emotional, there, there's academic gaps. Absolutely.
Yeah, so I agree with you, Sammy. And as you said, we got to worry about our kids here.
Well, they're teenagers and they don't want to get out of bed, I guess. I don't know. I, I think there's a couple of things. We've been putting out some surveys. Um, I know that, um. The high school administration has been doing a lot of surveys to the parents and also to the children. Um, seeing what would consider, you know, why, what would make them want to come back. Um, you know, changing classes was one of the reasons, um, wearing masks has been the major reason. People don't want to come and wear masks, but we don't have a choice. Um, so those are the biggest barriers that we're dealing with is, you know, the flexibility of being a regular high school student. And I could do the same thing sitting at home. So, uh, you know, those are things that we're looking at and with the guidance changing from CDC right now, going to three foot. Um, it's opening up as long as department health agrees to it. It opens up a huge opportunity for us to be more flexible with our kids in our school. And I'm hoping that that will change for next year. Not this year, we're too close to the end of the year. But planning for next year, a lot of this budget was focused on three foot, not six foot. Cause I was optimistic that we're going to get more kids here.
I think that we have to hope. All of our kids will be back and that we will not have to continue doing this. Um. And I'm sure you're working on. Plans to. The what ifs.
The what ifs.
The what ifs. Anybody have any other questions? I, I think it's fantastic that we're looking at a budget where we can actually provide for our kids here. Get them back in the building, get them playing sports and riding buses and.
And, and just so, so everybody knows, I, I was on the webinar with the CDC uh yesterday. And, um, we brought up from, um, Quest art, our quest are about buses and what the limitations are. And CDC says as long as the windows are open, the kids can ride the bus with a mask on. So there's no real guy, you know, they're, they're, they're not putting a barrier there. And also they said if the kids are wearing a mask, they, they could be three foot apart without barriers. So things are changing drastically. Um, and if the, our state department of health decides to follow that, which I had a meeting with them today. It looks like that's going to come out in guidance in the next couple of days. So that's a very positive situation for, for our kids.
But the county also has to adopt.
The county is, they're, 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 they're on board. Good stuff.
All right, thank you so much. All right, personnel, action items. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, so carry. Except letter of resignation from Allison Zimmer, uh, physical education teacher assistant effective April ninth, twenty twenty one. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, abstained, so carry. Are we replacing on callback list?
Um, right now, we're, we're going to just do a long term soap until.
Uh, curriculum and instruction, action items, move date of graduation from Friday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty one to Saturday, June twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Motion?
Why are we doing that?
Okay, any discussion?
Okay, a couple of reasons. One is that, um. If we do it on a Friday, it's going to have to be in the morning because of the possible heat. And if we have it, we're going to have to have it outside probably because of the, still the regulations. And, uh, and, and on top of that, people are going back to work and it's going to not allow people to come or they're going to have to take sick time. If we do it a Saturday, we have more flexibility, more people can actually come to see their kids. Um, and that we can have it outside and. Well, not by, not, we won't be able to have people in there. I mean, we only could have so much by, like, regulations right now is a hundred and fifty people. So that's not going to be enough people to see where their kids graduate. It's, it's not that about the auditorium, it's about the regulations that we're dealing with. This came from, this came from my, uh, the high school principal, working with his administrative team and also with the kids. And they are also looking at doing, uh, possibly do graduation at the park. So there's more flexibility and more space and picnic tables and a pavilion that they can do, do it at instead of just doing it in a, in a concrete. So. Those things are still being discussed, but there's a reason that the, the team wanted to bring this to the board.
And the Saturday time would be?
Could be in the morning. Could be in the morning. And we would have to have two at this point still, with all the kids there, like we did last year, unless things change from.
I had to work last year.
The C D C.
That was Saturday.
Oh.
Well, the kids are requesting us. The kids, like advisors.
Advisors are working with it. Yeah, it's a joint decision, yes.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained, so carried, but at least we know what date it'll be on.
I know.
Some of us do work on. I know, I know. All right, Superintendent Action Item.
I just recommend that we cancel the special Board of Ed meetings on the following dates. April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. And June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, they were on the calendar to have those meetings and I'm not. I'm recommending that we do cancel those.
I have a question, after we did the walkthrough and all those things that need to be taken care of.
So if, if that comes about, I can always ask to have a special meeting on these dates, yes.
You knew exactly where my line of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And non-action items.
So I did mention, Mr. Golos, as you could see, he's been a great asset to us in eight days. You know, in eight days, he, he's helped me more than the prior for months. So, thank you, Steve, I want to publicly thank you for what you've done. And also athletic report, I want, you know, somebody mentioned, it's good to see the kids out in the fields. It, it has been a blessing to see our kids come to practice and. We've been testing our volleyball girls once a week. So far, two weeks in a row, eleven students at a time that are playing volleyball, all tested negative. And we do it with our school nurse and we have to do that because it's high risk sport. But it's, it's great to see the kids, they're doing great. We do have our schedules posted on the Facebook page. The first home games for soccer or the thirtieth, I believe, for the girls varsity and the first for the boys. And the first volleyball home game is the first as well. Now, we can't have. Spectators in the building, but we're going to stream it with a video. And that way it will be played, posted for parents to see their kids play in the community. But as for the outside sports, the soccer in particular, and when we get to spring sports. We have red cards that two people can come per family and they have to use that for either home or away games. So we're just got to follow the C D C guidelines and what we have to do. And we're very excited and I can't wait to see those kids playing in the sports. Good stuff. We're working on that.
Need motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Post. So carried, and Linda, thank you very much for being here tonight. Welcome.